Good evening. And welcome to tonight's regular board session for July 18th, 2017. Order at 6:05. As a reminder, it should be the duty of each board member to conduct themselves in a professional manner to avoid making unnecessary noise and refrain from private conversations. The public should be held to the same standards of conduct. This meeting is conducted in accordance with Robert's rules of order. Could we all rise for the flag of allegiance? Flag of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Good evening. And welcome to tonight's regular board session for July 18th, 2017. Order at 6:05. As a reminder, it should be the duty of each board member to conduct themselves in a professional manner to avoid making unnecessary noise and refrain from private conversations. The public should be held to the same standards of conduct. This meeting is conducted in accordance with Robert's rules of order. Could we all rise for the flag of allegiance? Flag of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Secretary of Defense.
Martha Momoney, President. Lisa Gully, President. Joseph Taylor.
President. At this time, may I have a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda?
I believe that the agenda as written.
By trustee Martha Momoney, may I have support?
Supported.
Supported by Treasurer Anthony Mcgowan. Questions, comments, concerns regarding tonight's agenda? Secretary of Defense.
Martha Momoney, yes. Anthony Mcgowan, yes. Lisa Gully, yes. Joseph Taylor?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Yes.
At this time, we need approval of the minutes from June 13th, 2017, June 20th, 2017, June 27th, 2017, and July 11th, 2017. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes for the dates so stated.
Moved by Mrs. Gass. May I have a second?
Second.
Supported by Martha Momoney. Questions, comments, concerns regarding the 1, 2, 3, 4 dates of the agenda mentioned? For minutes, I should say. Secretary of Defense.
Anthony Mcgowan?
Yes.
Martha Momoney?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Yes.
Joseph Taylor?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
At this time, we need approval of the minutes from June 13th, 2017, June 20th, 2017, June 27th, 2017, and July 11th, 2017. May I have a motion?
Martha Gass?
Yes.
At this time, we need approval of the minutes from June 13th, 2017, June 20th, 2017, June 27th, 2017, and July 11th, 2017. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes for the dates so stated.
Moved by Mrs. Gass. May I have a second?
Second.
Supported by Martha Momoney. Questions, comments, concerns regarding the 1, 2, 3, 4 dates of the agenda mentioned? For minutes, I should say. Secretary of Defense.
Anthony Mcgowan?
Yes.
Martha Momoney?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Yes.
Joseph Taylor?
At this time, we will open this session up with public comment. You have 3 minutes. Please state your name and address. Anyone for public comment?
Martha Gass, 270 East Main Street, Ben Harbor, Michigan. I was coming in regards to attorney decreeing her request to try to incorporate the close ratings of the student Ben Harbor area schools with a program for court watching and various other things that she was trying to start. She said quite some time before she got into the district. And with various other individuals that she had gotten in the front. Just like how to help send a class and various other programs that's been going on. She was out for something. She wanted to teach the kids about the legal profession and have professionals come out to, you know, show them how the profession works from a legal standpoint. And nobody has gotten back with it. And I was wondering, is there certain entities that we work with in regards to Ben Harbor area schools? Or do we work with other people? Because she's a lawyer here in the city of Ben Harbor, Michigan, and going to raise you in Ben Harbor, Michigan. And must be the one who teaches you at Ben Harbor High School. Or is this one in there?
So we don't answer questions, but like?
Can we put that on the agenda till we are looking to possibly get back with you? Or do I have to write it down as a question to see what was going on there?
Correct. Then the secretary then they'll get back with you with that comment as far as what transpired or what did not transpire.
Okay.
Anyone else for a public comment?
Good evening. My name is Renaldo Triplet. 818 Costcoast Avenue, Ben Harbor. Just wanted to take this opportunity to address the board of education and to express the concern that I have as it relates to fulfilling our board being complicit in many, many areas as it relates to our public schools here in Ben Harbor. I have never had the opportunity to meet Mr. Bryant, who was the principal at Hull Elementary School. But I'm very, very concerned and I'm very disturbed once again. We're in this space, in this place with another African-American administrator, male administrator, who is being called a question as it relates to his ability to lead in this district. I have, after I read the article, and what have you, saw a lot of familiar situations and circumstances. And I do not want to make this about me. But I am very, very, very concerned as you guys, the way to go forth. I encourage you. I know that it has been stated and it's almost understood that you are the power of the board. That you do not have to be answered to on any situation or circumstance. But the citizens of Ben Harbor voted you in, and so you all were elected by the people who we voted to serve us. This cannot continue. It cannot. It's not right. It is not right. And we're here again. I would like of this board to promise the citizens of Benton Harbor that you would do due diligence before you make a decision. You need to do some serious investigating of what happened in this school district as a representative that you have as central administration. It's not personal. You got to be selected to do this work. And so I want to say to Mr. Bryant, I don't know you personally. I've never met you. But tell the truth. Be honest. And stand firm in your conviction. And you'll reap the harvest if you think not. And to all the citizens of Benton Harbor, it is time. It is time for us to stand up for our community. It is time for us to stand up for our children. You are a naked official and the majority of you all, I personally voted for. So I hope that before you make a decision tonight, you have some more work to do. Because there's a serious situation that I have in this district.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? At this time, staff report number 1. Mr. Johnson, Real Estate and Marketing, agree?
Thank you. Reason for board consideration. The district has several surplus real properties. Facts and analysis on June 13th, 2017. Board of Education approves a real estate marketing plan for surplus real property. This plan? Our real estate broker will use its marketing resources to proactively sell buildings. This evening is recommended that board approve a contract with Signature Associates to market the district's real property, surplus real property, with term running from July 17th through December 31st, 2017, with the option for the superintendent to extend the contract by up to 6 months through June 30th, 2018. Policy reference is 73 numbers disposition of real property. The recommended actions of Ben Harbor area schools, Board of Education votes to approve as presented the real estate marketing agreement with Signature Associates from July 19th, 2017, through December 31st, 2017, and to authorize the superintendent to extend this agreement by up to 6 months if mutually agreeable with Signature Associates and the consent consultant.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of staff report number 1?
I know that the Ben Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to approve as presented real estate marketing agreement with Signature Associates from July 19th, 2017, through December 31st, 2017, and to authorize the superintendent to extend this agreement by up to 6 months if mutually agreeable with Signature Associates.
Moved by Treasurer McGowan. May I have a second?
Second.
Supported by trustee Martha Momoney. Questions, comments, concerns regarding staff report number 1?
Joseph Taylor?
Yes.
Anthony Mcgowan?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Yes.
Martha Momoney?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Yes.
Staff report number 1 passes. Staff report number 2. Monthly financial reports, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Reason for board consideration is to set up financial resources prepared for and provided to the board of education each month. Facts and analysis, this evening is recommended that payments for all of Mr.'s funds be approved for the month of May 2017. Policy reference is 6470 payment of claims. And the recommended action is that the Ben Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to approve the UBD 2017 payments for the funds listed below.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of staff report number 2?
I know that the Ben Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to approve the UBD 2017 payments for the following funds totaling $1,727,203.27.
Thank you. Motion by Treasurer McGowan. May I have a second?
My second.
Supported by Ms. Gass. Questions, comments, concerns regarding staff report number 2? Secretary.
Lisa Gully?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Yes.
Martha Momoney?
Yes.
Anthony Mcgowan?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Yes.
Joseph Taylor?
Yes. Staff report number 2 passes. Staff report number 3. Non-bargaining resignations. Mrs. Baptiste.
Thank you. Subject resignation of non-bargaining staff. Reason for board consideration. What's that the resignation of the non-bargaining staff? For our facts and analysis, we have Fred Smith, the athletic director here at the high school, resigned effective July 5th, 2017, went to Ben Harbor area schools since 2015. His exit interview is being emailed to me. So I have to email the forms out for the others as well. Those all will be emailed in a time. You'll see that mail there. The recommended action is that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to accept the resignation of the aforementioned staff and that a letter is sent. Thanking him for his service to the students and district of Benton Harbor area schools.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of staff report number 3?
I believe that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to accept the resignation of the aforementioned staff and that a letter is sent. Thanking him and my teachers.
Motion moved by trustee Martha Momoney. May I have a second? Supported by Treasurer McGowan. Questions, comments, concerns regarding staff report number 3?
Well, we want to thank Mr. Smith for his service. I know how excited he was to become the athletic director here at Ben Harbor Free Schools. And he was brought to tears when he accepted the job position. So we want to thank him for his passion and his willingness to work with us.
Secretary.
Joseph Taylor?
Yes.
Lisa Gully?
Yes.
Martha Momoney?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Staff report number 3 passes. Staff report number 4. Instruction staff resignation.
Reason for board consideration, the board must vote to accept the resignation of the instructional staff. Facts and analysis. Joyce Andrews McKinney was a special education teacher. She arrived at Ben Harbor High School June 12th, 2017, and she had 1 year with Benton Harbor area schools. Her teacher, who was the math teacher at Dream Academy, resigned effective June 14th, 2017. He also had 1 year with Benton Harbor area schools. At previous years with Dream Academy before they were brought into the district. And as I stated before, their exit interviews were emailed to them as of this summer and will be sent back to me. The recommended action is that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to accept the resignations of the aforementioned staff and that a letter is sent thanking both of them for their experience to the students and the district of Benton Harbor.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of staff report number 4?
I believe that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to accept the resignation of the aforementioned staff and that a letter is sent thanking them for their service to the students and district of Benton Harbor area schools.
Thank you. Motion moved by trustee Martha Momoney. May I have support?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Gass. Questions, comments, concerns regarding staff report number 4?
Yes. How many special ed positions do we have open?
Last time I compared with our director of special ed, it was 10. I will see if that number is accurate.
And based upon the number of 10, are those positions open and based upon resignations?
Some of them resignations and some unfilled throughout the year. And some will be filled by subsidies throughout the years. And of course, we'll closely certify changes of this part.
Thank you.
Mrs. Momoney?
That's practice as we had that when someone resigns that their Ben Harbor email sometimes immediately. So are these exit interviews being emailed to their Ben Harbor email? And are they making? Is that going to be made maybe to have a chance to respond?
No, these are going to be personal emails.
Oh, it's house.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments, concerns for staff report number 4? Secretary.
Martha Momoney?
Yes.
Anthony Mcgowan?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Yes.
Joseph Taylor?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Yes.
Staff report number 4 passes. Staff report number 5. Testing and career readiness coordinator.
Thank you. Such a good proposal for a new position. Facts and analysis, the testing and career readiness coordinator will provide support to the curriculum and instruction department by analyzing the data and working with the school's administration and faculty in understanding assessment data with the goal of generating effective responses to the students' needs. Reason for board approval, the board was approved new positions that were not in budget. This position is funded through title loan funds. And the recommended action is that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to approve the new position of testing and career readiness coordinator.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of staff report number 5?
I believe that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to approve the new position of testing and career readiness coordinator.
Thank you. Moved by Treasurer McGowan. May I have a second?
Second.
Supported by trustee Martha Momoney. Questions, comments, concerns regarding staff report number 5? Secretary Momoney?
Okay. This came to mind to me after an email recently received after leaving another position. How was the recommended salary for this position determined? Based on what?
I believe, I'll let Mr. Johnson add if I'm missing anything, but I believe we'd love to add that the salaries work for instructional coaches and came up with a recommendation that correlates with this position.
So this is in correlation to instructional coaches?
I believe so, yes.
As though we coach you on on, that's what we used to make. So yes, it is. Okay. And then just for be aware, policy 3120 does say the Marshall group employment and when that covered by terms of negotiated collective bargaining agreement, we fix the compensation and establish the terms of employment. So we don't necessarily have to go by the recommended salary.
So did you want to change it?
No, I'm just wondering if I'd be aware of it. We don't have to accept the recommendation that, you know, we have.
It's not contract.
We want to say more, we want to say less. Anybody that's not covered under a negotiating contract, then we can control their salary.
Trustee six.
According to policy that trustee Momoney just read, when have we given that opportunity to set the salary if we're at the point right now of approval? And is that a new policy or has that been an existing policy? So why are we at approval point? And we did not, we were not given the opportunity to set the salary?
Yeah, and why we're giving the opportunity? This is part of the massive set of policies that we changed last year. And I'm still learning this. And this is just one that I happen to learn this week. Yes, you know, that's my reason I'm preparing on last week. I knew policies before we changed them and I'm going to teach you and everything, but I'm still learning the policies and it's taking a while to get caught up.
So what are we getting ready to do with, with the knowledge of this policy?
It's up to the board. We can continue as written? Or we can, we can scell it back and put it on hold and maybe address it? I know we have a meeting tomorrow. That gives me time to think about it.
Oh, you all have a meeting tomorrow?
No, Thursday. I apologize.
Well, I believe we can approve the position, but not necessarily the salary.
Okay. Okay, so what was the motion according to facts and analysis? Was it to approve vote or is it to just approve the position?
The motion to approve the position.
The new position, yeah.
Everyone okay with that? All right. Secretary of Defense?
Martha Gass?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Yes.
Lisa Gully?
Yes.
Joseph Taylor?
Yes.
Anthony Mcgowan?
Yes.
Martha Momoney?
Staff report number 5 passes. Staff report number 6. Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. This is for proposal of a new position, facts and analysis. The assistant superintendent will add support to the superintendent's office by providing leadership promoting the educational objectives and values of providing training, district curriculum, effective instruction practices, grant administration, and responsive programs and services. Reason for board approval, the board was approved new positions that were not in budget. This position will be supported by the limited funding that includes both general and title funds. The recommended action is that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to approve the new position of assistant superintendent.
Thank you. May I have a motion for staff report number 6?
The recommended action is that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to approve the new position of assistant superintendent.
Moved by Secretary Gully. May I have a support? Secretary. Supported by trustee Martha Momoney. Questions, comments, concerns regarding staff report number 6? Ms. Six.
Thank you. I don't have a problem with approving the position, but I would like to apply the policy, will not apply the policy, to make sure that this board comes to policy according to the salary. I will support.
Trustee Momoney?
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with the position, but when we do the salary and stuff, I mean, the right to view. There were not enough assistant superintendents in the county to establish your market range. Then it was recommended that we take what a principal would do at the midpoint of the county market. And it gives us how we did this. But I'm curious why they're not basing it? Because it's based kind of upon the high school principal's salary average comparing districts in the county. And I'm curious why it is not based upon our own pay salary? Because if we're going to employ an assistant superintendent based upon an average of the districts in county, are we going to do the same thing with parent professionals? Are we going to do the same thing for teachers? And there are a number of these schools that have anywhere from 500 to 2,500 more students than us. And therefore, their higher, their average salaries are going to be higher than what we have. So for the board that looks at this, I think we might want to look at some other considerations.
So Superintendent Dr. Walker, if you can address that?
Sure. So as shared last week, the work on this was done in March. And as the board may recall through the partnership agreement, our efforts have been to secure funding to raise all salaries, teachers, administrators. So this was based on that. Based on the premise that we were going to, ideally going to secure mission of funding. So the nice part about the policy is it definitely allows board to bring into this. And it is right, that is what we were working on this in March. So we can look at and consider it because we have not secured the funding. And so I think the trust of the salary now, a couple of thousand dollars could go to basically at all Benton Harbor responsible. We talked about that today, two years ago. But it just is what we did in the world, which was in March.
I just wanted to be there to everybody. And then in the past, when there was everybody that talked about bargaining, and what's that to bargain really got us a church backing to our best percentage of pay raise. We tried to equal everybody, so everybody was on the same standard. And so if we're going to base it upon. And so if, if we're going to base it upon county lines, then we need to base everybody's on county line.
And we hope when we, um, for refinancing of the loans, that that's going to afford us funds to help write salaries. But again, that's still all unknown, so I said this work was done in March. And so the options to reconfigure the salary is certainly there, and it allows, I don't disagree with much.
Any other comments, questions, concerns regarding, uh, staff report number six? Secretary.
Angelina McGowan.
Yes.
Mark Lamonti.
Yes.
Mark Lamonti.
Yes.
Mark McGann.
Yes.
Joseph Taylor.
Yes.
Lisa Gully.
Yes.
Staff report number six passes. Also, um, so next on the, next line item, which is termination of staff. Is there a staff report for that?
We've just called a resolution. We have a term in the year, Clark Hill, which is a process.
So there's a resolution, um, under termination of staff. And there's an attorney here from Clark Hill. What's your name, sir?
Steven G.
Steven?
Yes.
So if he would approach the board. So before, before the board, there's a resolution, uh, that was established by Clark Hill. And so Steven is here from, as a representative of Clark Hill to assist us in this matter.
Um, as I understand it, at a prior meeting, uh, Mr. Ronald Bryant, uh.
We can't hear you, sorry.
You can't?
No.
This is better now?
Yes, sir.
All right, sorry about that. Uh, it's my understanding at a prior, uh, board meeting, Bryant chose not to come forward to the board, but the board had, um, chosen to allow him to submit a written rebuttal, which I believe has been submitted to all of you. Um, and in addition to that, that the superintendent also submitted a reply to this rebuttal as well through your, um, consideration in deciding whether or not to, uh, terminate his, uh, deployment. Um, I do believe in superintendent Walker's, um, reply, there are certain items that, um, the board would want to consider that we would have to go to a closed session due to, uh, FERPA considerations. Um, and on that note, it, uh, has come to, uh, our attention that Mr. Bryant has disclosed um, his rebuttal to, um, at least one, uh, local media outlet. Um, and, uh, it should be put onto the record that, um, by doing so, uh, contents there in, included personally identifiable information of students within the district and, um, thus constituted, um, potential FERPA violations.
So before we start this, a few questions, comments from the board concerning the resolutions, resolution that's split before us from Clark Hill. Now's your time to make statements or ask questions. I wasn't here last week, but I reviewed the binder. Have not looked all the way. Ms. Seeks.
I couldn't hear everything the gentleman was saying, of what constitutes the opportunity to discuss, uh, uh, items in closed session. You, you said something about.
Oh, um, if the board wanted to discuss, uh, certain items that superintendent Walker, um, mentioned in her reply to Mr. Bryant's rebuttal, um, because of, uh, FERPA, basically, the board would have to go into a closed session.
Is that the rule of the board, to go into closed session until you hear?
If, if, if they needed, yes, absolutely.
Okay. So, uh, someone will make the motion. I have some moves. Do I have a second? Supported by, so, motion to go into closed session for attorney client privilege. Motion by trustee Seeks, supported by Treasurer McGowan. Secretary Gully.
Mark Lamonti.
Yes.
Lisa Gully.
Yes.
Joseph Taylor.
Yes.
Angelina McGowan.
Yes.
Mark, Mark McGann.
Yes.
Mark Lamonti.
Yes.
One of the seats.
We have a lot of MARS on here right now.
Right.
May I have a motion to come back into open session? So moved by trustee Mark Demony, supported by Trent River and Bowlin. We're back in open session at 7:32. In front of us, we have a resolution for termination. Dr. Walker, if you would read the resolution.
Sure. A meeting of the Board of Education, Board of Benson Harbor Area Schools District, was held at Benson Harbor High School on the 11th day of July, 2017 at 6:00 p.m. and another break. and another regular meeting occurred on July 18th, 2017 at 6:00 p.m. The July 18th meeting was called to order by Board President Joseph Taylor with six members present and one member absent. The following preamble resolution were offered by a member.
Okay, I'm going to move.
So moved by trustee Martha Monamy, may I have support?
Support.
Supported by trustee Gass.
Thank you. Whereas the superintendent informed the International Academy at home under Principal Mel Bryant administrative that the superintendent intended to recommend the board terminate administrator's employment for the reasons stated and a correspondence dated and provided to the administrator on June 22nd, 2017 and containing a binder of exhibits presented on July 11th, 2017. And whereas notice of the superintendent's intent to present the superintendent's recommendation to the board to terminate the administrator's employment and a board hearing on July 11th, 2017 was provided to the administrator on or about June 26th, 2017 as well as on or about July 3rd, 2017. And Principal Bryant was given the opportunity to submit a rebuttal, which he did on July 15th, 2017. And whereas the board has considered the reasons for termination and the information presented to it by the superintendent on or as in me on July 11th, July 14th, and July 18th, 2017 and by the administrator on July 11th and July 13th, 2017. And whereas the board finds that the reasons for the administrator's termination are justified, now therefore it is resolved that the administrative employment of the administrator by the district shall be terminated effective of July 18th, 2017 for the reasons set forth in the superintendent's letter dated June 22nd, 2017 and the submissions the district received on July 14th and 18th. The superintendent shall provide written notice of this resolution to the administrator no later than July 21st, 2017.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns before secretary's call for both? All right, secretary's done.
Martha Monamy? Martha Monamy?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Yes.
Joseph Taylor?
Yes.
Angie Guccano? Lisa Delly?
No.
Resolution passes. Next nonrenewal of staff member? Is that coming from you as well, Ms. Baptiste, or?
Yes, we have two law firms.
Good evening, everyone. Tim Garvin, True Law Firm, and I'm here on the matter involving April Eddie. This is not a very complicated situation. Essentially comes down to whether or not she had fulfilled requirements of the substitute teacher permit. And secondly, is she certified to fill this position? In this particular case, a year ago, you may recall, Ms. Dappis talked about substitute teachers standards being expanded to allow for you to have a substitute teacher come in to fill a position where you have a vacancy. And he expanded these requirements. And we, the administration, did pick this, picked this April Eddie to fill this position, special education teacher. However, in order to renew her permit, she has to receive a highly effective or ineffective rating. And in this particular case, she did not. On top of that, she did not show that she was enrolled in a plan that's leading, in a program that's leading to certification. So on that basis alone, her employment likely should be eliminated. And on top of that, if she's not able to qualify as a substitute teacher, then as a teacher, you have, you have to have someone in this position that's certificated. So means you have to have a provisional or a professional educator certificate. She does not. So if you continue her into this position, what essentially happens is she's not qualified in the substitute teacher permit requirements. She's not a certified or have a provisional certificate. So what you risk is having sections 163 and 1, section 6 of the State Act, a potential sanction for having a non-certificated teacher in that position. So for your own purposes, it is, I believe, in your best interest to approve the recommendation made by administration that this particular individual's employment is terminated for those reasons. And the sanctions alone to have, since MDE has opened the last, since 2014, increased their auditing of the school districts when it comes to whether someone has a certificate or not, or in this particular case, complies with the substitute teacher permit requirements. With those onu men is in place, the sanction that could potentially be left in hands in districts, I think, warrants even more so vote up approving this recommendation.
Thank you. Questions?
So how long does she have until she was able to enroll in a class? What was the deadline for that?
She was supposed to have enrolled in that class by now, and we haven't received anything from her, from my understanding.
What was the date? What's the date deadline? That's by now.
Okay, well, her substitute teacher permit expires August 31st. So she has until August 31st to fulfill that requirement. But the end is the big thing in this whole thing. She has received an effective or highly effective rating, and she did. And so on that basis alone, since she did receive that rating, you can't continue her on. That's just my opinion.
Okay, so if the rating was done during test taking, the evaluation's done during that, would you view that as a fair rating and not instructional time? Because I mean, I guess this, this situation for me and circumstances, it was done during the time the kids were taking tests. So how can we say that there is a fair evaluation? Is there any fight that she can do to say this evaluation was done fairly to possibly get that certification?
The challenge is the, the, she could challenge the rating that she received, but there's a timeline to do that as well. They haven't received, from my understanding, an appeal of her rating. I don't think the superintendent has received that at the moment. And so.
And what's the timeline?
What's the timeline? I believe, I mean, it's supposed to be within, she's not a certified teacher, a tenured teacher or probationary teacher, this is a substitute teacher. So there's no defined timeline for those. Under the revised school code, we have a timeline for tenured teachers and probationary teachers, but this is a substitute teacher come in as substitute teacher. So when you put her in that, that, in that category, there's no case law or statute that says specifically what her timeframe is.
So how can you go that far?
Because I'm just looking on faith, I'm not holding anything against her, I'm just giving you facts. And what I'm saying is that right now, as I sit here, she did not meet that requirement with the request that she had to have an effective or highly effective rating.
We can change that if it's not a timeline. I mean, that's just why.
Well, yeah, I'm just trying to give you the background on it is that the two requirements are, one, she's got to have an effective or highly effective rating under the substitute teacher permit requirements. And second, she's got to enroll in a program that leads to certification. And from the information that's been provided by administration, that information has not been provided to them. And so that's where things stand.
Trustee's seat.
I'm sorry, I was reading, so. Thank you. Where did the rating come from? Was it an internal rating from our district? And then the second question, you kind of said termination and then you said elimination. So can this individual's position be eliminated versus terminated? And who did the highly effective, the ineffective rating evaluation serve?
Principal Pearson did the evaluation. It was, she rated minimally effective. And with respect to your second question, you would be terminating her employment.
This would be termination.
Yeah, termination.
And last que, I don't want to say last, but a question on that. Who puts together the evaluation? Is the evaluation a standard evaluation across the board, or is this facility by facility?
They have a evaluation process that they use for each building. And Mr. Pearson was the evaluator in this particular case when each of the quadrants, completed the quadrants. There was a response from Ms. Eddie in disagreement some areas on her evaluation. But he completed requirements, I mean, the quadrants. And then with respect to whether this is an evaluation that is used throughout the district, let me have Ms. Dappis ask that question.
Because I, my, my, to clarify even more, I want to know who created the evaluation? And then if the person who created it, did they facilitate, or did somebody else do the survey or, or do the evaluation? Because I can create something based on what I think, and then I can administer the evaluation, which could be biased. Yes, ma'am?
Just wondering what Mr. Robinson's point in the evaluation process is to speak to that in multiple ways, or you can't.
Okay. All right, if I may, you may definitely comment. At what? So with our evaluation, how's it in stages? I just wanted to give some clarity on what actually goes into that evaluation, because it's more than just that final observation that will contribute to our final rating. So there is a section for the teachers to fill out, they do a self-assessment, they record their goals, there are learning blocks that happen where the, the manager will come in and observe them in their classroom. And they also have that formal observation. From there, they have an observation conference after that initial where the administrator and the teacher are speaking and kind of going over what was observed in that formal observation. Year, mid-year progress report happens, evaluator here puts notes for the different domains that the teachers are required to rate themselves in, and then the evaluator is also rating them based on those domains. This is taken into consideration. Here's a section on discipline, and if the instructor had disciplinary issues throughout his full year. There is a section for special accomplishments, trainings, and then a student rating is also a part of it as well. You've got to read that wrong with the student data throughout the school year. We take that into account, and that's a pre-populated number that comes up based on the data on the students, the instructing students throughout the school year. All those factors in combination would contribute to really the final evaluation. It's not just me coming into the classroom and observing you, they're saying that you are not a factor. It is all of these things coming together which are weighted and would rate you on the scale.
And the scoring is ultimately done by HR?
No, it's preset. It's a preset scoring. So based on the data that's entered, as well as the administrator's recommendation, all those factors will hopefully present. The tool that we use, Stages is the framework which we uphold, the evaluation tool. So the evaluation tool is one of the Stages move tools, which is thoughtful classroom, you guys have heard of thoughtful classroom. There's nine quadrants that are there, plus there's a quadrant number 10 that talks to professional, um, behavior, professional practices. So that is the evaluation tool that we actually use. So we didn't create it, it's something that is to improve that we have a more active.
Yes, Stages, you have to be correct.
That was, that, that I could have probably said it articulated a little quicker, but that's the response that I, I am looking for. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Martha, you have?
No, I was pointing.
Any other questions, comments for Tim regarding this matter?
Where is the full evaluation?
We can, we can provide you with a copy of the evaluation. I believe, Team Resources may have a copy for you to, if you have, you don't have an hour, if you need one.
I have that here.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, you have a copy?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Copies can be made available, but it's not included in the page.
So have we received a rebuttal back from the employee concerning what we're looking at, the, the broken down targets?
I don't know.
Yeah, not.
I don't see any information, communication.
And, and I would like to say that in this particular case, Team Resources did get this information sent out a while, I mean, July 6th, I believe was the date today's, July 18th. So there's been no response yet from Ms. Eddie that administration's aware of, that I, that I'm aware of.
You have questions? So we have a resolution on the table for a nonrenewal of staff member. Do you want to read that, Dr. Walker?
Benson Harbor Area Schools, Grand County, Michigan. A regular meeting with the Board of Education of the Benson Harbor Area Schools was held at Benson Harbor High School, Benson Harbor, Michigan, on the 18th, the day of July at 6:00 p.m., this evening, the evening. The meeting was called to order by President Taylor, members present armed, six members absent. The following preamble resolution were offered by a member. Martha Monamy, and were supported by a member of Malibu. Whereas on July 18th, 2017, superintendent of schools, Dr. Shelley Mills Walker, pursuant to state law, filed with Secretary of the Department of Education a recommendation for termination against a employee, a teacher with Benson Harbor Area Schools hand. Whereas the Department of Education has the duty under the state law to ensure elementary or secondary students are taught by instructional staff that possess a provisional or professional education certificate. Whereas the Board of Education finds that A, employee failed to meet the four years of the two career requirements. Employee did not acquire a provisional or professional education certificate as required in section 163 of the State Act and resulted in the immediate termination of the employee's employment. C, the reasons for termination are justified. Whereas the Department of Education has been advised by its administration on the basis for the recommendation to terminate as filed and has deliberated with regard to whether to terminate this employee's employment pursuant to state law. And whereas the Department of Education is informed and advised, and he has been, on this with written notification by letter dated July 3rd, 2017, from the issue superintendent under recommendation, has been provided with a copy of the recommendation filed with the Board of Education on this date and has had an opportunity to respond to the recommendation, either personally, by representative, and/or in writing. Now therefore it is resolved that the Department of Education hereby decides and determines proceed upon the recommendation to terminate employee's employment as filed by Superintendent Dr. Shelley Mills Walker, July 18th, 2017, without modification, including the recommendation and proposed outcome dismissal contained in the recommendation. The Board of Education hereby authorizes and directs its superintendent to provide and to furnish to employee a copy of this resolution, which shall serve as the ready decision of this Board of Education to terminate employee's contract. And a copy of the recommendation laying out the reasons therefore dated July 21st.
July 21st.
2017, which has been filed with this Board of Education on this date among which this Board of Education has decided and determined to proceed. And the Department of Education hereby directs and authorizes its superintendent to inform the employee that it is believed of this board that employee does not have a remedy under the Teachers Tenure Act if she is not certificated. However, if she believes she is not certificated. However, if she believes she does have a right to remedy under the Teachers' Tenure Act, she may contest the Board of Education's decision to proceed upon the tenure charges by filing a claim of appeal with the State Tenure Commission and by serving a copy of that claim of appeal upon this Department of Education not later than 20 days after our receipt of this Department of Education's decision to proceed upon the tenure charges. The superintendent is directed to inform employee that the recommendation for termination of employee was filed with the Secretary of this Department of Education on July 18, 2017, and that this Department of Education decided and determined to proceed upon the recommendation on that same date. The superintendent is directed to inform employee that her appointment is terminated effective July 18, 2017. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution should be and the same are hereby rescinded.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. Secretary, will you vote? Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Prior practice for substitute teachers, is this the standard that this board approves? And I think, I don't know if I asked that question before, still a question. Does this board, is this board requiring a substitute teacher to terminate? Or is that the role of just the superintendent?
Well, in this particular case, for example, you want to make sure that if you, if in this particular case, you don't, the board does not take action and the superintendent takes action. I've looked at your board policies, I don't think there's any, there hasn't been anything that's addressed substitute teachers and whether they get, who has the power to terminate them. In this particular case, I think the best course of action, the state's approach is having a board to take action because it is a challenge. Then wouldn't you rather have the Board of Education was, that's elected by the people of the state, I mean people of this, this district to be challenged as opposed to a superintendent being challenged? I, so I'm recommending that is the best approach. And on top of it, uh, substitute teachers, she may challenge in court, I just think it'd be a safer approach to have a board to take that approach. Um, I don't think that, I mean, I've looked at it, but I don't think there's anything in the board policies that addresses that. I mean, we yield a policy that I don't think that.
Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so still for clarification, attorney, this particular item will set a standard. Okay? Because if you start this practice with substitutes, will this practice continue? Or we're not going to be arbitrary in saying this substitute, not this substitute, because I was looking for a policy that justifies us participating in this process. And that's what I, my question was most. To see if there was a policy that gave us permission or allowed us to participate because the past history of this particular board has not been to engage in this particular process. And I did ask that question last time, did I?
And I would just like to say that last year, since they expanded MBE teacher options, substitute teachers typically you wouldn't have to, basically you're going to have the potential, since you already have 10 special education teachers shortages that I've heard earlier in meetings, that you may have to have more substitute teachers put in place. These MBE expanded options for permits were not really in place a year ago. So for you, for this board, that's the difference. July 2016, they came out with the new options. So if a school district such as this district, or I think they use Detroit as another example, have shortages, then you can put people in that may not have the certi- certificate requirements, that you could put them in as a full year substitute permit, a full year shortage substitute permit. There's, there are different certificate options that are available and that's why this is a little different.
So we're doing this because this person is not what we would consider a regular daily substitute. So if this is a person who is given a contract, and that's why we're going through this process, where when I sub for a day or if I sub for a month, I, I'm not, I'm not going to get this because I'm just a sub.
Right.
When you're.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead with your comments.
I guess you guys messed me up. So my point is, I mean, we're having two different types of subs now. We're having the daily sub, weekly sub, monthly sub. And now we're having this new provision that the state has created where the subs get a contract and are paid teacher's salary. And they're supposed to be taking classes and getting certified? And that's why we're doing this?
Yes, because things like a full year basic substitute permit, a full year shortage substitute permit, and an expert substitute permit. These were put in place, uh, July 2016, last year because of the shortage that was in place. So you had before this was in place, the regular, like I said, daily, monthly. But this is a little different. These individuals can be in for the whole school year. Now, under Section 1236 of the revised school code, after you've served 150-day period and 180-day school year, you, there, you can make a legitimate claim to claim to the collective bargaining agreement to, I mean, benefits in the collective bargaining agreement. And this is the other side to it. If you fill all your positions, which would be great thing, and there's one position that comes open and this person served a 150-day period, they can make legitimate claim for that, that position. So that's why in this particular case, I think it's important for the board to take action as opposed to, uh, just it being a superintendent.
How can they claim a certified teaching position?
In the beginning.
How, I mean, with, because, you know, in order to be a teacher in the state, you have to go through school, become certified.
Correct.
And then how can someone else who's just a sub, who hasn't taken any classes, who hasn't done what they're supposed to, how can they trump someone who is certified?
What I was referring to is they're not trumping anyone. I'm saying that after they, the position's been filled, under Section 1236, if they've served 150 days and 180 days school year, they can make a legitimate claim to an open position that they're certified, that they're, that they're qualified to fill. Yeah, that, that would be, that would be just one example. In this particular case, it wouldn't apply where this, this person served 150 days and they didn't have the certification, the problems that this employee has, they can make legitimate claim for that open position, is my point.
So my question is for Kelly. So how many of these positions do we have in the district with this contract? Or whatever, that's, how many employees in this district do we have under the same situation as Miss Eddy?
This would be the only case because she was offered a position, so a district position with our school district as a special education teacher. With the good faith that she would be willing to require, and I think it was a force or something that had to be completed to get her certification transfer from another state to the state of Michigan.
And what was the timeline of that?
The timeline was definitely September. I don't have an exact date for you, but it was in September that we requested the permit when we saw that the requirements were not met. And then we made calls and tried to determine where, where everybody was at. And since it was a claim, in order to remain compliant, we then requested that permit for Miss Eddy.
So that's September 2018 or 20?
That would have been 2016.
2016, or is it higher than that?
Um, look that up for you. I believe it was the 6th, but.
The 6th of September? So she had by September, what, 20?
Yes, that's correct. September 6th was the higher thing. Um, I don't have an exact date, but I would say by the end of September, we were looking to see that we'll fill. We saw that it was in progress with MBE, but as we did not see it being approved, the full approval for machine certification, like I said, to remain compliant, we then got the permit so that she could continue teaching with the district. So the intent was for her to be a district employee, not a substitute. We pulled that permit so that she could continue teaching under the new standard that had passed and because we didn't see the certification.
So she was certified, she was certified in Ohio, so they're not in Michigan.
Correct.
So she's not a non-certified teacher, I just want to make that clear. She had education.
Correct.
She just didn't have her certification transferred to Michigan.
I would just say to the board, my comment, because when I hear the statements from the attorney, it's clear. I, I'm not willing to put this district in any position to be fined state aid money, right? And if you guys remember, months and months and months ago, back in, I think it was Bank or School System, the superintendent and another administrator were fined by the state of Michigan because of the same thing. So I'm not willing to do that. It's clear to me that that's not the way to go. We're here for our students first.
The permit, what was the request for the permit? And when was the expiration of that permit? A permit is to say, I'm giving you a, a permission to serve until, and if the state gave you a permit, did they give you an expiration date on that particular permit to allow her to teach?
Yes, and it is August 21st, I believe?
31st, 2017.
Of this year is when that permit would expire.
August 31st of this year, it expires.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion on the floor? Any other questions, comments before we call a vote? Secretary, go ahead.
Lisa Gomi?
No.
Mark Lamomony?
Yes.
Joseph Tanner?
Yes.
Anthony McGowan?
Yes.
Martha Gads?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Staff report number seven, Miss Gina Lovett.
Good evening. So the subject of staff report number seven is a technology purchase for Dream Academy international, and international hall students, teachers, and administrators. The reason for board consideration is that Dream International Hall and all teachers and administrators are in need of updated students, updated technology. The tax and analysis, to offer equity between buildings, it is recommended that we purchase combos for the students at Dream Academy to use for 2017, 18 school year through their useful life. The students at Dream spent all of 2016, 17 school year with very limited technology. In order to continue using Oxyware and other online resources, the purchase of technology for Dream students is critical. Student technology is also needed international, international hall school. The current, current technology in place in that building is iPads. Using Oxyware on iPads has proven to be an extremely difficult task to have success. The current technology that is issued to staff is over five years old. The staff have higher needs for updated technology. Therefore, it is recommended that we purchase new laptops that offer greater mobility and offer better processing speed. The current technology will be rolled into student use until the replacement cycle comes due. This will be covered through Title I funding. The recommended action is that Vinton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education votes to approve a purchase not to exceed $412,000 for student, teacher, and administrator technology.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of staff report number seven? Moved by trustee Sees, may I have a second?
All right.
Supported by trustee Mark Lamomony. Questions, comments, concerns regarding staff report number seven? I just want to say thanks, because the kids were looking forward to it last year. This year, we can provide all of our students, not just the local, but our adopted students that who are moving in our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Secretary, go ahead.
Lisa Gomi?
Yes.
Mark Lamomony?
Yes.
Martha Gads?
Yes.
Monica Se?
Yes.
Joseph Tanner?
Yes. Staff report number seven passes. Um, is there a staff report? Okay, so information from Mrs. Robinson, NWEA data and district improvement plan.
Lady board, I have just a couple of things to share with you before your information. The first point is our data for NWEA. Um, there's also a tab at the bottom that displays our annual data. So I just have a couple of data points that I wanted to share. We have, um, two different sets of graphs. So this data shows that the center students have met the grade level norm. Um, in most terms, it is proficiency, but when we look at NWEA, they're really just super role. Um, every grade level had positive gains in math except for 4th, 7th, and 11th. And then every grade level made gains in reading. So what we're doing is measuring the gains from fall, um, to, from fall 2015, 2016, and to the fall, spring 2016 and 2017. So we're really measuring our years growth. Three of the fourth grade teachers had drastic, um, I'm just kind of going to talk about some of the reasons why. Usually some of the, um, the data, you know, being stagnant in some of the grade levels. So when we look at this math, um, graph at the bottom, it says PHAS, NWEA, called to screen, grade gains in math. You will see that the seventh, fourth grade, there was a negative change. And the 11th grade was a negative change, and the 7th grade, there was pretty much, they were stable. So our, our fourth grade has those teachers we talked about, trauma. Um, four of them went through some drastic personal events during school year, um, big trauma time. And then our 7th grade students not had consistent answers. So that was some of the reasons why. And then our next steps for this is to create an investigation of goal setting with students using the NWEA student profile platform. This will allow and inquire students and teachers to sit down, look at their goals where they are, and really plan out how to get to that grade level of the red bands when they're taking these classes, maybe more personal, more serious with it when we do that. If you just scroll down to the charts, you'll see there is a, it just, you know, they bought a screen with gains in math that are also one in reading. Because we kind of give you a quick visual of what you're looking at. Um, the gains show fall to screen 2015, 2016, and gains fall to spring 2016, 2017. So you have a years growth. The chart all the way up to the left is just another way to show that, that you can quickly measure, you see. And then what we're looking for, we're looking for growth. And even though this growth is very, very narrow, it, it is growth. Um, and it does give, give all of us a little bit more, um, excitement, encouragement, motivation for to, for, to take work. Questions you have?
I'm interested in the, I would love to see what we said our goals are going to be. You know, if our, we came to actually being growth.
So next month, we will do our scorecard analysis where we look at what we benchmarked and what we hope to be. And then we'll be able to bring that into, we have not benchmarked that. We wanted to share that with you because we had talked about it. Uh, we'll be able to, that could easily, we'll go through the end of the year. Uh, do keep in mind with a lot of the SRO limits, you know, we're very excited to even see what we're seeing because of the differences, but we will. because of the differences, but we will, we will see you in the community. What we projected, what we would like to have been, and what we want.
Any other questions, comments, concerns regarding the NWEA data? All right, Mrs. Robinson, uh, district improvement plan?
I don't know if you guys wanted to have any questions regarding the aims well piece, because at the bottom, you guys have not looked at what's the second half. Um, foundational, um, piece of the news will be. The first chart on the left, um, gives you, um, benchmark data for the oral reading fluency scores for our first to fifth grade students. And it measures where they, where they were in the fall and where they were in the spring because if you miss assessment. Our first grade students did not take the oral reading fluency, um, test in the fall. They used it in the spring. And you can see that there was just a, a one percent rate of, um, change in our second grade for the positive. I do have all the way to the right, um, how we tier them. And this kind of gives us our direction which students to, to work with as we be creating instructional plans in our interventions. And so those are tiered by one, two, three. And the tier three are those that are most aggressive, so those are the ones who will go after. And work the first.
Any questions concerning the aims well, K35 data? All right, the district improvement plan?
The district improvement plan, um, is what's submitted June 30th through the assist platform, which is what the state requires at this point. Um, it is currently waiting for approval. Um, the team who helped put this together was our district instructional leadership team, which consists of myself, Dr. Walker, our Baron, Lisa Mycelte, which is Mary Del Mariani, Brian Scott, and Carla Osborne. Um, we were consulted and given direction as well by, um, Dr. Tracy Seasley, who's our Michigan Department of Education consultant. And, um, those administrators and teachers staff also had in part on this document. The process, um, throughout the year, we were revisited, we revisited the plan during our monthly high school meetings, as well as with our quarterly state meetings, Dr. Tracy Seasley. Um, and our leadership team participated in the initial systems review, where we reviewed our district processes for the following areas, teaching for learning, leadership, aligning professional learning culture in school, family and community relations. The information was reviewed with the administrators and teaching staff during the professional development session. The team uses information to update activities outlined in the district. The next, um, um, sheet shows just a snapshot of what our goals were. This, I took a picture of it directly from this piece. The goal section at the top is in purple. You can click on that and it will take you directly to the, um, district improvement plan. And you can, um, it's a lengthy document, so you can review that, um, at a point when you have time, right, or a quarter, a week, or something like that. I just took, um, some information from that document and put it to this slide. Slide show for you for tonight. So our three goals that we are, um, keeping, and we had last year, we're carrying those over into the 17-18 school year. All schools should create positive student behavior in order to be environmentally supporting student learning. If you see right on the right side of that, there's one objective to that, three strategies, and 19 activities. Um, our goal number two, implement a common goal aligned curriculum and assessment system that supports effective instruction and addresses improved student achievement. So that's our achievement goal, um, one objective, three strategies, and 14 activities. And then number three, develop systems to build district leadership capacity. There's one objective, three strategies, and 14 activities to that. Um, the next page just shows the three objectives that were aligned, and I have another quality to go with the, um, to go with the goal. So the first goal, the objective's there. Second goal, objective's there, and the first, first objective's aligned. And then I have a snapshot of what those activities, some of, just an example, example of the activities that are listed in the, um, district improvement plan. The last document is just our next that we submitted June 30th. It is now primary and, um, NWE is reviewing it. It may be sent back for us to make revisions, make updates based off of their suggestions and recommendations. And then wait for, for, once that approval is completed, then we will continue the process for revising, updating, um, implementing the plan throughout the school year. Throughout those quarters, we will stop, make adjustments, um, with our instructional pieces, curriculum pieces, whatever else, or leadership pieces, um, so that we can have this working document. It is working, living, reading, so it's not stagnant, but it is this good, so it's going to be.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Robinson regarding the district improvement plan? Okay, onto staff report number eight, Dr. Walker, bearing mental health authority proposal.
Subject for RFP for mental health counseling services to vary mental health authority. Reason for board consideration is part of the A prevention safety grant and RFP for mental health counseling services. Was issued this spring. One fair responded. The proposal reviewed across the fair and prevailing markets. It is now the recommendation to contract with varying mental health authority for those services. Facts and analysis, administration recommends that a contract with VMHA commence this fall, on June 30th, 2019, to place mental health counselors at Hall 2, Enoke 1, and ACA 1. The service delivery model proposed uses school-based therapists to provide convention, education, consultation services, I'm sorry, and consultation services among group and individual intervention. Service passes and individual services are provided to students following the parental permission. The service model will include the supervision of social work interns. It will also coordinate and align with the services now in place through the intervention rooms, intervention specialists, social work interns, management university, and building administration. The cost for one year of services of $407,232 will be appropriated from the commencement of services to June 30th, 2018. The cost for second year services through June 30th, 2019 are $432,322, as shown on attached budgets. All costs are covered by the gain prevention and safety grant. Policy reference, educational outcome goals, and guidance and council. Recommended action that the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education votes to approve is presented the resolution to regard the contract for providing mental health counseling services, including supervision of social work interns through June 30th, 2019.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. May I have a motion for the approval of staff report number eight? Moved by trustee Seitz, may I have a second? Supported by Treasurer McGowan. Questions, comments, concerns regarding staff report number nine? Secretary?
Yes.
So it's the number eight?
Uh, this is number eight.
Yeah.
Did I say that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Monica Seig?
Yes.
Um, Martha, Martha Momini?
Yes.
Lisa Billi?
No.
Uh, Steve, Joseph Tanner?
Uh, yes.
Margaret Gads?
Yes.
Staff report number eight passes. Staff report number nine, Dr. Walker, the old policies.
Thank you. Um, subject is new and updated the old bylaws and policy adoptions. Reason for board approval is that the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education to review the updated the old policy adoptions, and there are three thousand, four to five thousand updated bylaws and policies. Facts and analysis, periodically, the Board of Education will act to update the old policies. In some cases, the Board will need to choose varying actions within policies. The updated and new policies will be brought to the Board at this time exhibit mutations and suggestions, which made by the administration and our policy committee of the Board. Professional staff, the meaning, I'm going to say professional staff as presented, support staff as presented, students as presented. And the board policy reference, um, looking by laws and policies, such that the working action is that the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education votes to approve the Benton Harbor Area Schools new and update the old policies as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. May I have a motion for the approval of staff report number nine? So moved by trustee Seitz, may I have a support?
Support.
Supported by trustee Martha Momini. Questions, comments, concerns regarding staff report number nine? Let's start with, I mean, Treasurer McGowan.
I did look through this, and don't we have to choose before we approve? I mean, because it says option one, option two, and then also in, in some of the others, um, you know, like in one consideration, there are like four or five different things. So don't we have to choose that before we approve the whole package?
Yeah, I mean, and you're absolutely right. We can, we can choose those fine items, right, whatever that may be. That's how we did it past. Go ahead, Dr. Walker.
Well, I'm going to read this, so like the recommendations we have that we presented, like we put this, you know, there are only, only, let me spell it. There's a, as I spelled before, there's a bar on this side, on the outside column, the left column, that we've written in our recommendations to the Board. If the policy is new, then you have to choose. If there's a current policy that is being revised, you don't necessarily have to choose. So we can provide where those variables play in, our recommendations for the Board, which is why we included them last week in order to vote today. So now, if it's a new policy, but if it's a revised policy, you don't have to make those choices before making those choices when they adopt it, the policy before.
Correct. So, so I think, uh, Dr. Walker, I'm for.
I mean, I just.
I know, but, so, so what I'm trying to say is that under professional staff and support staff and students, uh, they show in parentheses revised or new. And so that's where Dr. Walker is saying certain things you have to do, certain things you don't have to do. I see only one policy, and that's under staff report. A couple of policies. Under staff report, so 4440, page one dash one. It's not new or revised. I don't know if that's a typo.
So that means, um, I'm, I'm assuming, because I have to look at these, I don't have to look at one on one. But the other variable that the Board, I vote, is that at the very end of the policy, there are like some numbers and references. If goals change, then you'll see a yes next to that, saying the Board has to approve the policy being updated to reflect those methods, which of course you want to do. So it may not be a new revision to the policy, but it may be a new reference. I think those are called references to still policy. So I believe that's the third variable. So you've got the bar on the side that tells you if you need to say yes or no to revisions and updates. You've got, in new policies, the bar, as it's going new, what you've got options to select, which we've made recommendations to. And then you've got the revisions to the references, and of course, at the bottom of the policy. So those are the three places where the Oba presents to the district tents, we're presenting to you, they recommend the policies are updated and are newly adopted.
Trustee?
I think it's up to the Board to select what we want. It's not up to the administrative staff to make the selections for the Board because we drive the policies. So, I mean, they do recommendations, so whatever, but if you're all selected, I want to vote on this. Ain't cool, because you were talking with the, but, um, you can take it for another day. And, uh, so we can go over it and, um, discuss what we want as an option, because this was going to drive what, what decisions we're making, what we do, not who we implement to make our decisions, to make what our policy is going to be.
Yes, ma'am.
My question to, uh, trustee McGowan is, uh, do you feel like it's premature voting on this item on the agenda tonight? Is that right in the question?
Yeah, because when I went through, I mean, I saw where it says yes, I saw possible. And then I, I was going through, choose option one, two, or three, and there wasn't. So that's why I thought this was something that I needed to check.
So, but we need to review, right, so answer you. So I would recommend that maybe we postpone this until. The motions already on the floor. Well, I mean, you can, right, okay. So, you can vote it down, and then you can, all right?
Martha Seig?
No.
Martha Momini?
No.
Margaret Gads?
No.
Anthony McGowan?
No.
Lisa Billi?
No.
Joseph Tanner?
So staff report number nine fails. Uh, hopefully we can get that back on the docket.
So the Board would drive that because the giving it the first time was the activity for the Board to review and overdrive any recommendations. So we all, because we want to have the reference.
All right, staff report number 10, added days for administration.
Thank you. So, um, subject is extending the work here for principals and assistant principals with the requirements of the partnership agreement. It is beneficial to extend the principal and assistant principal work here. This will give more time for professional development around the partner agreement initiatives, preparation for new service teachers for the same, and having professional development for leadership capacity. As the extended days are devoted to professional development activity, the cost of those days can be paid for through title grants. Facts and analysis, administration recommends that the work here for the high school principal go from 220 to 225 days. For all other principals and assistant principals, the work here will go from 211 to 220 days. Wages and benefits for this change totals to $28,978. And will be funded by title grants. Professional development activities will support the goals of the partnership agreement and will include the 2017-18 school year leadership development, teacher evaluation, mental health model, and power work for services, critical implementation and calendar, use of formal and permanent assessments and other instructional best practices. Policy references are educational outcome goals and employment contract. Recommended action that the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education votes to approve is presented the extension of the 2017-18 work year and subsequent work years for principals and assistant by title grants.
All right, thank you, Dr. Walker. May I have a motion for staff report number 10?
Certainly.
Moved by trustee Martha Momini, may I have a second?
Support.
Supported by trustee Gads. Questions, comments, concerns regarding added days for administration? Mrs. Momini?
Okay, um, too quick, let's see. For the 17-18 work year and subsequent, subsequent work years for principals and assistant principals. In the next year, we don't have that title grant funding available.
We will present a different plan for the school board. As we do look at our title grants, we do try to think beyond just the immediate year. We would see this as a benefit to the district and all partnership business leaders.
So we're not running a risk of having to give it to them? We just say 17-18 work year, then why aren't we, maybe, the options open? Or are we tied into this for how long? If we haven't stayed this way?
Well, I don't know the exact, I just, I want to speak to this with Trish, but my thinking and experience would be that, you know, this, anytime you move into title funding, it's always contingent on the partnership funding. I think in, um, whatever way we write, counting the numbers, this is what, whatever way we write the contract that we own the sport, then we can definitely say contingent upon funding.
So my buddy at the very end, to be funded by title grants, that would cover us in case we lost the title grant.
And I hear the very first one, I'm sorry, what you said.
Well, yeah, in the very end, it says to be funded by title grants. Maybe it needs to be subject to title one grants or title grants, so that we have a definite act. And then I was wondering, how many people does this affect?
We have, um, two administrators at high school, two administrators at ACA. We want administrator at, um, Enoke, one at, um, Hall. And I assume you should have paper paperwork, we'll have one administrator at.
So did you count any fingers while you were naming those? So did you count on your fingers while you were naming those? Because I forgot to count on my fingers how many.
Two, four, five, six, seven?
Seven, okay.
What did you have in mind?
This one's the guess.
Sorry, Scott. Principals contracts are four years.
Okay. And even if we say a year that it's going to carry on for subsequent years, we're not even running a problem. I mean, I hope it does, but we also know that we never know how much money we're going to have, especially in title grants. So, okay.
Any other questions? Comments, concerns regarding staff report number ten? Secretary?
Martha Momini?
Yes.
Martha Momini?
Yes.
Anthony McLeod?
Yes.
Martha Gass?
Yes.
Joseph Tenny?
Yes.
Lisa Bell?
Yes.
Staff report number ten passes. Dr. Walker, there's no staff report for this, it's just?
Correct. We'll provide paperwork at the end of the meeting from the board to agree that we can have a man sign the membership to issue.
Okay. So after the meeting is over, we're going to just sign the Michigan High School Athletic Association's. President, who's she?
Does everybody have to sign it, or just?
No.
Just two people?
Nothing.
So the message is in writing.
Secretary.
Okay, secretary. Okay. So next up, Ms. Gina Loveless, department update for technology.
So the monthly report that we typically get on whose computer that Mary just said has been the help desk ticket request. And so in front of you, you will see the statistics for June. At the bottom of that page, I give a brief explanation. We weren't as focused on closing tickets in the beginning of June because it was the end of the school year, and we were more focused on the teacher check out process and making sure that that was successful this year, which our department thinks it was very successful. And so now that we're back in the summer, we're focusing on a lot of those tickets and installing projectors in rooms that need projectors and some of our summer work, and some of the big projects are in the fall weekend. So.
Any questions?
We'll be very busy in a moment, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gina. Next, Mr. Leonard, facilities and operations, department update.
Thank you, sir. Number of different things going on, just kind of bringing up speed. This will be a condensed version of additional information, a dense coverage here in the last few days, so we have awareness of what's going on. As I'm sure you're already aware, the CSM, the Civil Maintenance Services team started working with the district on July third, two thousand seventeen. Now, Mr. Michael Robinson, welcome him as the CSM account manager. And his team have been investigating the summer classrooms ready and started district-wide summer cleaning, de-dowling already. Last week, the facilities and operations department launched a new school duty facility on maintenance, direct system. Registration instructors are distributed to all staff, completely staff member, and direct supporters being provided to new users to the facilities and operations department. We're going to be launching the new event management system in the next few weeks, which will streamline the facility use request process and support effective management for precise scheduling of both internal and external events in the BHAS facilities. Charles Grayson, the capital of the project, it is well underway. The repair and maintenance units have been installed, or installed in complications and the related job work systems are being completed. The change order required to establish fire safety requirements has happened, received, and is currently being reviewed. That information will be brought forward soon. Cafeteria air conditioning repairs and upgrades have received modified proposals from the company that has worked on this project to accommodate the district's desire for to lead project starting. The information is currently under review and will be presented with work for review after the administrative team has looked at it. Through partnerships with World Hall and Sunrise World Hall, the repair works new for playgrounds at B E C Hall and then Alken. The remaining work to meet safety requirements are scheduled to be completed by early August two thousand seventeen. Work's going to include replacement of the damage fencing vault, I'm sorry, the replacement of damage fencing on the playground area and sports fields at Hope International. The high school gym for a project, why are you going to see it? Right now, see it off the line. They did complete all the painting on Saturday. It came up, we let them building in perspective some of the work that they had completed. It's going very well. It'll be returning this week to start the finishing process of all the code covers. Facilities and operations departments are going to be meeting with B E R Plunge tomorrow to develop a repair strategy for bathroom fixtures, including a cabin. Recommendations and corrective action plans will be presented for review as soon as I can have review of those myself. District-wide key project, the initial meetings have already been completed with the end of week, with the development of the district-wide key control system. So this is an organization that may have heard the name before, the district worked with in depth back in two thousand six, seven, eight, nine, and discontinued for two years, being stated, completed thirteen and discontinued after that. They actually managed our whole key system information, code, and anything else that would be a secure folder of that information. So we reestablished relations with them, are moving forward. On Thursday, I'll be meeting with their installation team, who will be looking at doing the facility block audit. We'll get that taken care of in layout, which will provide us with building specific plans and costs. Concurrently, we've coordinated the facilities and operations department, helping peers with construction, developing, estimating, and evaluating the actual doors and access points for the corrective action to support the new blocks. Access to the good door that we want to be in. BHAS also partnered with the buyer state, but we actually moved into full fruition of that partnership here last week. They're going to be providing for integrated test management programs for two thousand seventeen and eighteen year. We finalized the developments of our training programs, and we are coordinating right now for scheduling with contracted staff and district staff to actually provide the upscale training as we move forward in the next year in preparation for the start of school cycle.
Thank you. Any questions? Mrs. Momini?
Yes. On the facility use requests, a non-district organization, how do they access the request form? Outside or what?
Yes.
I hear, I hear outside on this word, I want to hear this one.
It's on.
Okay, I can't ask that. Okay, that's all I need to know.
And as we move forward, we also have direct link for an external entity when you make the migration to the school, to the school duty facility management.
Trustee Seitz?
Can this application be filled out online, or does it have to be downloaded and then submitted? Or is it, are you able to actually go in and check and fill this out right online?
Absolutely, of course. Now, in case someone does not have web access, we also have a stand-in forum coming to the facilities and operations office moving forward, glad to assist up with that information and start the process.
They can fill it out and submit it right from?
We will help them do it if they need assistance.
Okay, great, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. So we have the sign-out front that hasn't been working for most of the year. Are we going to get that started, or we can grab the one front and say sort it, right? Place it up, because we need that next one before school starts. Also, there's a question of the AC that used to work in the band room. Since the band students are going to be doing marching band, when they come in to perform, right, can we check on that room? Make sure that they can turn the AC on? Also, what's the update on the parking lots with the asphalt, all of the grass coming out of the asphalt? Have we treated that yet so we can do corrective action so before school starts, our parking lots look nice and shiny?
So I can answer one right now, and two I'll have to go back to them.
Okay.
So one in relation to the sign-out side, sorry, I guess, we're into it as well as whether they can call tomorrow to a provider to provide services. I brought up a volunteer repair man that came out of a different district to offer some guidance and support. Unfortunately, the system was bigger than what could be intended to, through partnership and friendly relations. That being said, so we should see moving forward on that. We'll have an actual service provider come out and tend to it directly. Jumping to item three in regards to the parking lots, they met the CR, CR on the day, and we had written provisions into the RFP that they had established for the long care service provision that also included alternate pricing options that would address facility, facility trimming needs and access upgrade of the long trimming as well as gross termination, which is going to be what you're talking about in the parking lots. I originally actually did on Saturday and started signing that by hand just to see how effective that would be. We compared quite a bit behind Alken, which were issues with access to some of the gas valves. So it's a somewhat time-consuming job, a non-territorial difficult job. So we'll look at the two options, whether we can turn it or we can better allocate those internal resources and actually contract that out to one of our satisfied providers to aid if we want. Item number two, I'll have to go back to you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Leonard? All right, thank you, Mr. Leonard. Staff report number eleven. I'm sorry, one more. So public and game prevention report, Mrs. CA. Miss CA. Good evening.
I just wanted to provide a report of the expenses from March until today. So this just gives you an idea of the different projects that we're funding. The ones at the top are based on a proposal that was submitted. The ones in the middle are projects that I initiated to provide support after consulting with some of the personnel in the buildings. And then, of course, finally, the salary form, my role. This is based on information from the Skyward budget report that I've been getting access In the middle section, for numbers one and two, I need to reverse Benton Harbor High School and Jordan Academy and have those locations in the month. Then there might be a few projects going on during summer school, so for the August meeting, I'll have another.
Any questions?
I do. On your first grant project report, CA, the number of students that were impacted, where is that number? And what happened to the amount that was returned, the twenty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-thousand-eight cents? And how many students in your summer impact? It says amount granted thirty-five thousand, amount spent thirty-five thousand. How many students participated? And what did they actually do during your summer impact?
Okay. Let me see if I can recall all the questions first. The number of students impacted, I don't have those numbers on the report, but I can, when I update this and give you the revised version, I can have another student impacted.
The breakdown of each program, who participated, and how many, do they charge per unit? These organizations, do they have ten people?
What happened was, the individual or the group submitted a proposal, and they, along with the proposal, they submitted a budget. And so they did not receive the amount granted, they submitted invoices and they were reimbursed. So the amount returned was really, maybe, was really the amount not spent. So that, that amount was not even released, it's just that they didn't spend that amount. Summer impact, there were twenty-four students hired. They're still working, that program is running through August eleventh, I believe. So, no, I think it's August eighteenth. So that, that's still in operation.
And what is some of the specifics, Jack's script to be made in?
Oh, okay, so the thirty-five thousand dollars was the amount to fund their wages. That amount was submitted to the Barry Community Foundation that's serving as the fiduciary agency for all of the expenses for summer impact. So as a payroll is done, then it's submitted to the Barry County Foundation for making the payroll. So it's accessed as it's needed. And we've had, I think, two students move. So just like with the other expenses or the other grants, if you don't use all the money, the money remains with the grant.
Absolutely. So did they cut grass? Did they?
So their job, their job involves working in the parks. There are three parks, Hall, Broadway, and Union. And we have other partners, the Boys and Girls Club and the Y. The Y has provided, is providing recreational activities, science experiments, crafts. And so our students are there to support those adults that have provided those activities, and they're there to help the kids who come to the park to participate in recreation. We also feed the kids. Boys and Girls Club provides the meals, so the students are there to help with that meal time. They're also there to sit with the children who visit, because the idea is to have a sit-down meal type of experience where they're having discussions with the kids. So they, they are there to support the children who visit the parks with the recreation, the crafts, and the meal. And I'm not sure if I missed one of your questions.
You're fine.
Okay.
Secretary?
Is it possible we could hear from people who never gave them these programs?
That's a good question. You know, as for example, I think it was last night, we were at the Benton Harbor City Commission meeting. We've been interviewed, and it's just been centered around adults. We've also set aside a couple of days that donors have asked if they could visit to see what the kids are doing and talk with the kids. There are some videos. Julie Earl, who is a director for Twenty First Century, has taken pictures and videos. So maybe I can suggest that she email you all some video clips. Or if you want to have the children come to a board meeting, we could arrange that. So we're also having a, like a back-to-school batch, we're going to have a booth to share, excuse me, photographs and video clips of what all went on, and we'll have some children involved in that, so you'll be able to ask some questions. In whatever way you want to have access to the kids, to talk with them about the program, I'd be happy to make those arrangements, whether it's the student workers, I'm assuming that's what you want, I'm not sure if you want to talk to children in the parks. So, you know, we're open to ideas to make that happen.
Like these, the accident program, the history for change, the Rosa Girls, the VIP Club, I'm more or less interested in what they gain from those programs as opposed to, I mean, and the student workers too. But more or less, what did they, what was the outcomes, how the benefits, you know, that's what I want to hear.
Okay, you want to hear the children, the students that participate, okay. All right. Well, let me spend some time thinking about how I can make that happen. And for some of those, it's going to be in the fall before I could do that, but.
They're not here.
Those programs happen during the school year. The only one that's still going on is summer impact.
Oh, okay. So they happen during the school year, and you don't have any. So they happen during the school year and you don't have any...
And when the question was asked, I was thinking of just summer impact. But I'm happy to make arrangements because we got a lot of feedback about Girls and Girls. Mrs. Pearson, who's the assistant principal at ACA, has requested that they come back. We started with, we planned for the high school and ACA, but the first day that it was scheduled, no one showed up. And we didn't want to, no, I take that back. I think two girls showed up, but then the second time they didn't. And we didn't want to have the individual continue to come and no one show up. And it turned out that with a lot of what Mrs. Wells shared with me, that the middle school is really an important place for this kind of program to happen. There was a lot of competition with other programs going on in the high school. So, you know, the sports and the music and 21st Century, there was a lot of competition for the kids. And so they, they were having to choose, you know, where they wanted to go and they were staying with their, you know, regular activities that they were accustomed to. And that's not to say it can't happen at the high school, but we found out that there really was a great need for this level of support for the girls at the middle school.
But you don't want to move.
I'm sorry?
So this happened at the middle?
This one happened at the middle school. It was going to be at the high school one day, at the middle school another day. But the high school program, it didn't, it didn't get off the ground. So for this particular report, this is strictly the middle school, ACA. Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Mrs. CA.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Staff report number 11. And this is, so the board is to vote for liaison, as we discussed before. Dr. Walker, are you going to do that or would you?
So the subject is the partnership agreement liaison. The reason for the consideration was decided that the board will vote on a liaison from partnership agreement. Because of the work to be done by the board for the partnership agreement, it was decided that a liaison from the board focus during partnership agreement, where there goes our objectives. So regarding the action, because at the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board Education votes to approve, this is Martha Monley as the liaison for the partnership agreement.
May I have a motion for the approval of staff report number 11? Moved by Frederick McGowan. May I have a second? Supported by Ms. Gass. Questions, comments, concerns regarding staff report number 11?
Question? Yes, thank you. I want to know how this is going to be accomplished. It says recommended action that the Benton Harbor Area School Board agrees and votes to approve to keep the board focused during the partnership agreement. By what method is that going to happen? Is there a prescribed method to keep this board focused during the partnership agreement? Or is it arbitrary? I mean, I need to know what the method is that Trustee Monley is supposed to keep this board focused?
I'm sorry. It's the goals. If you, in the meeting with Dad making, if you recall that partnership implementation plan that was shared with the board, the conversation was, is this Mommy to help the board stay focused on completing those goals? So it's just about the goals.
In what way will, how will Trustee Monley? I mean, how will she, I understand it's the goal, but how will she do that? If we get off goal or if we get off task, how is she supposed to bring the board back to task?
So, so my understanding, a lot of the board members about at that session was you, there are, I don't even know, 12 or 14 goals that are in the partnership agreement with the board. And in those, of those goals, there were several action steps that were suggested to the board, probably that might help you make sure that you meet those goals because they have very specific deadlines. So what I heard the board talk about was the benefit of this making, was the benefit of someone helping to make sure that the board's action steps occur, whatever. I didn't hear a conversation on the how, and then there's more conversation on the what.
I'm more interested in what.
Yeah, I don't think you want to discuss the how. I think that's where I'm reading this coming Thursday. I know one way that manifests is for the monthly partnership meetings, is Mommy to represent the board every month. The folks who signed the partnership agreement come together to review progress when they bring them. She represents the board. I mean, you guys can all come, but she will represent the board. That would be the how. She will provide support so she can come back to you all and share information and update you on the partnership agreement's progress as a whole. And then the role of the board in that process. But as far as how she helps you all implement and execute your part, that's still to be determined by board.
And since I asked the question, and one of my expectations was that Trustee Monley answer some of the how. How does she anticipate that she can help direct this board if we in fact agree to her being this liaison? How do you anticipate that you'll be able to work with this board as a whole and make sure that yourself and the rest of the board stays on task with the partnership agreement?
The current is still through the president, you know. I requested that he go up with a date for the meeting. But I see a lot of it's reminders. Say, okay, we've got this goal coming up that we have to have a deadline for, and helping to facilitate what we need to accomplish. Like right now, we need some of the professional development plan and facilitate what we've already got done through Dad making, what we want to see done as a whole, and then move on. A lot of it's going to be reminders. And there's, there's a lot of goals that are ongoing that we need to sit down and decide, how are we going to show evidence to the state, you know, and what are we looking for? And those won't have to be doubled all the time. Right now is the big one. There's, there's three things that are due ASAP. But as a collaborative effort, you know, it's just kind of a reminder that, okay, this goal's coming up. We have a lot of work done within there. We just need to say this is what we want to do. And there's, there's more, we have more things that we can work on that I think we should put in our goal. I mean, this, only so many trainings we can do per year, and only so many changes we can probably do per year. But something we have to determine. I can facilitate, say, this is what, what we've got, the outline, we've got what we want to do as a board.
Basically, Trustee Martha Monley is, she's our taskmaster, right? So because we have this piece of paper, this document, but do we look at it all the time? So she's just making us aware, hey, look, July 28, there are several things that need to be met. So she contacts me and she says, Ms. Taylor, hey, we need to find a time to meet because we want to make sure that we're on the same page. Also, we talked, we spoke as a board with Dad making about getting the extension. So that's in the process as well. So to make sure that we stay on our timeline. So this is our taskmaster, or hopefully will be voted as, to keep us on the timeline so we can meet our expectations in the partnership.
I'm not making any decisions on what you're doing. I'm just, your calendar reminder.
I'm just asking, exposing the how question. I just wanted to know, this was a kind of blatant statement, and I wanted to know how it's going to be accomplished. That's all.
All right, any other questions on staff report number 11?
No, I think Martha is good for it because she does that anyway. She tells us this needs to be done right now, and we forgot and look at that. But I, my concern is, is making sure that the position is unbiased and that it is weighed on both ends and that it's not directed from central office and that it's totally a board decision, board.
You represent the board of education? I represent the board of education and the partnership agreement. And there's a place, the partnership agreement requires, and I didn't, so I sat down and got a copy of this and reread it. We had ourselves work that the state is really, we're asking all these people to help us, but there's a lot of the state basically demanding of us. And when we saw like 10 things that they said we needed to do, now it's time to do them. I know, this is our decision as to what, a few things have timelines, there's others that are not specific timelines. We, how are we going to accomplish those goals? And how are we going to evidence that to the state and to our partnership, partners? Because there's a lot of these things we do before we have a final approval from the state, we have to present it to our partnership people and they can give us input. But no. I mean, lousy job, but I mean, I mean, I know it's a high paid job, but...
All right. Secretary Beller?
Okay. Martha Gass?
Yes.
Joseph Taylor?
Yes.
Angelique McGowan?
Yes.
Martha Monley?
Yes.
Lisa Gulliver?
Yes.
And what else?
Staff report number 11 passes. Dr. Walker, comments?
Well, there are two other topics, I'm sorry, under your...
Oh, the meeting dates?
Yes, and then there are just a part of the discussion for us to have this time to have discussion.
Okay, we've already have Thursday's meeting scheduled, and I assume everyone would be willing to kind of give some input on what day of the week and how many days, how many classrooms we think we need to meet as a whole to get these done. So we as a group, we decide on meeting dates and how often we think we need to meet. As I show you what our goals are, because the grand is like a lot of trouble. And the important thing is we, and we've already got steps. We've approved the superintendent's evaluation, that's one of those. But we have to present things to the partners and we have to present ways how we'll verify it. Same way on the board's other evaluation. I don't think we've officially adopted the one we use, we're going to have to officially adopt it and evidence it. And then the big one is the professional development thing for us. And there's a lot of steps to that, that we have to choose what we're going to get training on this year is basically what it is. And how are we going to evidence that we have gotten that training and we are using that training? But I can outline all that for you more in time Thursday. I'll try to sort it out so it's not all logged together like it is now. This is what we've already, we've got some things done already. I started on four items.
And then Thursday, we can look at dates too, right?
Yep. I'm trying to make it as simple as possible to sort it out and show what we need to do and how we need to do it.
So we have other items here.
That's just little board. We only talk about partnership agreement.
So that other items are related to the partnership agreement?
Well, again, I did go through a meeting yesterday with some of the partners. And it is really cool to hear what some of these partners are doing for us. Most of them are for free, but we do have some stuff with Riverwood now that is paid for our grant with the mental health authority. But they are doing some cool things, working with our students, giving a call. Anderson University is working on a career day for our kids and taking them down there and showing them what it's like to be a pilot or a campus or an accountant and trying to get them enthused about becoming well-educated, to earn a good paycheck, you know, and to make life good for themselves. They have, coming in and working with our students. Every Friday, they come in and work with a group of students and have conversations. It was, it was really inspiring to see what the, how they're excited and how they are already doing things that they get to do this summer. It's its own curriculum. They have a little leeway to sell their goals. We don't. And then August 29, if you guys have been invited, it's in the mail not soon now, the area mental health authority that we voted on is going to counsel us for us, is offering youth mental health first aid professional development on August 21. We're invited to come and speak eleven hours in Mississippi, give books and classes. And it's going to help our staff and everybody learn where you get kids in crisis there at school, what can we do to help them so that the crisis doesn't get, get out of control. And so if anybody can come to that, that would be, the more we know, the more... In fact, Boys and Girls Club has requested, see, they consent a few people. We're all speaking the same language and we're all working with the children in the same way. So we're all going down that street in the same direction. I'm excited. I was really encouraged by people yesterday.
Any other items under other? This may help.
Did you skip comments for board meetings?
No, no, no. This, so this can be, me too, Missy.
Well, the other was mine, I think, telling you about the meeting.
Under partnership and board piece, because I assumed you were at other as well. So we're not there yet.
This is not a bold of other, this is just a...
Yeah, that, I was taking it back. So, but that's okay. Any other items under board collaboration and partnership? All right, so superintendent?
Thank you. So real quick, I wanted, I was going to give you an update on the summer impact, kind of going back to the receipt's question about, someone's question about student service. So we have a maximum of 200 students that are in service in the summer impact across the three parks. Unfortunately, in one of the parks, which is Hall, only Hall, I'm sorry, Hall Park, there isn't high degree participation for someone sitting at that park. But in the other two parks, we have anywhere from 70 to 90 students participating per day. And so a decision was made today with the summer impact team, which is Benton Harbor and these other entities, to suspend the program at the Hall Park due to lack of participation. They have hopefully four to six kids and they work with those kids and families to see if they can join the other parks and the houses as well and put those resources into Broadway and Union. So I wanted to just share that, and that was, the decision was made today based on the data. And then also to say to the board, if you don't know the process that we kind of put it in place to try to help you, you'll know Susan will begin to invite you to events. And so it gives you an opportunity to take it from off the paper, to kind of put it into, hey, you know, ally with me, do I want to do this? And then you can accept or decline. And that way, my hope will be that you will be more informed and more facilitated for activities and events that are occurring in the district. So our intent is to, you know, just really, you're going to get a lot of invites to feel like that approach, and do let me know. But the hope, this is just hope keeping you informed and to know. But we want to keep too, and this is an example, that this mom we spoke of would love to have you join us in this day of professional development. The entire staff, teachers, everyone will go through this opportunity through Lakeland and Riverwood to better understand and travel into office, so your presence would be highly welcomed. And so just want to say, things have been great. Summer school's gone well. A lot of projects, as you know, with Mr. Leonard around facilities. But again, the partnership work is amazing, it's comprehensive, it's massive, but it's great for kids. There's some amazing, amazing things will begin to happen in the partnership agreement that Dennis required. We'll be coming to you and sharing and providing updates on some of the activities and some of the things that are happening with the partners and how that's been a custom in the district, so.
All right, thank you. Board comments will start with our newest member, Ms. Gass.
Well, it was another April evening. More I read, the more I, the more I know I need to read some more. So I think we got some things accomplished tonight and look forward to your questions coming.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Monley?
Thanks, no matter what pass out, but I have nothing to say.
Trustee C? Yes, thank you. I was looking, I had seen a young lady come in, attorney Elizabeth McCree. And I just looked back there, thank you for coming. I was on Facebook today and I had looked at something and I was kind of concerned that attorney Gavin had presented an offer to have students in our district to participate with several attorney and attorney firms that I do know are interested. And I'm not articulating it the way that she has. And... And to follow shadow attorneys and learn the whole system. And to her disappointment, she did not get a response to that request. And I would like to request that president and the superintendent allow her to do a presentation to this board because there is, when I begin to look at the responses from people from all over that said, I'm in, I'm in, please, why didn't? And the responses, it not only concerns me that somehow it got lost in the shuffle. I do remember forwarding an email with that request. But I think it's very, very important if our, our students learn what law really is about and they get interested not only just being lawyers, but learning the judicial system in itself. And this would be a tremendous opportunity. And then to trustee Gass, I'm learning as I participate in the events tonight. And sometimes the public doesn't realize how much information that this board has to decipher through in order to make a decision that sometimes is very hard, but based on information and laws and requirements, we have to make certain decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Secretary Bill?
No comment.
Well, I think for me too, it's been a long meeting. I'm back, but I had no comments. Welcome again, Ms. Gass. So any other business from the board? All right, so be resolved at the Ben Harbor Area School Board of Education meeting. Be adjourned, and may I have a motion?
I will.
Moved by trustee Sees. May I have a second?
Why, thank you.
I have a second?
I was, I was going to vote and move.
Okay.
I know we look a lot like.
So you moved and who supports? And supported by Ms. Gass?
Monica Gans? Martha Momoney?
Yes.
Angelique McDonnell?
Yes.
Lisa Gully?
Joseph Taylor?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned at nine fifteen.